All right, we have meeting minutes from March 18th. What's the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Got a motion for the minutes, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Howdy all. Critter. Items A, B, and C have been struck off of our list. That leads us to the 2019-2020 street closure requests by Anna Marie Fallon. Hi.
Hello gentlemen.
Good evening.
It's been a couple of years since I requested road closure, so here we are again. Anna Marie Fallon, you need to do my address, the whole thing.
That helps.
Okay. 4450 North State Road 39, Danville. And I'm here on behalf of Danville Tri-Cappa. And we have our annual fair on the square coming up again in September. And we normally request road closures for two years, so that's why I put the 19 in the 20. Asked to have that on the agenda. So, we are requesting for 2019, starting Friday, September 6th at 5:00 p.m. until Sunday, September 8th at 6:00 p.m. to have Washington Street from, oh, sorry, I should have written this down.
Mary?
Yeah.
Thirty-six down, two blocks on Washington, same on Jefferson, and then Marion Street from, shoot, is that Indiana over to, well, three blocks. I'm sorry.
Cross Street.
Thank you.
Of course.
So, the road closures, same road closure in 2020. That would be Friday, September 11th at 5:00 p.m. through Sunday, September 13th at 6:00 p.m. Again, it's for our annual fair on the square, which is our largest fundraiser of the year. And we partner with Parks, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with it, but I can tell you more if you need more.
Okay. Any discussion? Team?
Common request. Poor Jack Amusements when they have the carnival up on the square. Department of State of Point has always been very good about keeping it quiet.
Great, any problems? Any, you're okay with that? Okay. Police, Jim, you're okay with that? Right. Council members, what do you think?
How many vendors are involved? How many people typically attend?
Oh, those are good numbers. I don't know, I don't know it off the top of my head. We normally have vendors around the square from Washington, Marion, and Jefferson, so just that U shape. Sometimes we have some overflow south, a little farther south on Washington.
Is it two rows of vendors on each street?
That's our goal, yeah. So, there's forty, around a hundred. Well, last year there was a lot of rain, so we had not very many vendors show up.
Okay.
So, but that, that's usually the goal. So, around, I guess that would put it around a hundred-ish, right around a hundred.
Hundred vendors?
Yeah.
Really?
If there's, yeah, if there's forty on each block, so there's ten on either side of the alley on both sides.
It would be a hundred.
So, forty, forty, and forty. And then there's a few, you know, some get double spaces. We have some spots for hopefully the Ferris wheel again, and try that one again, and...
How many people do you see over that three-day period?
I normally defer to thirty.
We have three hundred just for that.
Yeah, I want to, well, how to count crowds. We normally...
You do a swag system?
I'm sorry?
A swag system? I'll explain that to you.
Okay, I would be happy to hear that. Yeah, I'm not familiar with that. I would say probably like a six to eight hundred range over the weekend. It's all day Saturday, half a day Sunday. We have bands on Jefferson Street at the corner Jefferson and Marion, and then food vendors, you know, on Marion, and then regular vendors on the other three, the other three sides.
Hey, do we have to worry about insurance on this?
We get insurance, but I'm trying to remember what Laura said last year, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we have insurance, and we have our vendors get insurance as well.
Okay, all right, good, because we need to make sure of that. And will you take responsibility for contacting the businesses in this area that are going to be affected?
Definitely.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had, the past few years, we've had one person designated, and they take flyers around to the businesses and try to reach the renters too up above, and so let them know that the road's going to be closed.
Right.
And it helps us too, because we've run into issues with cars still there after, you know, six, seven o'clock when vendors are coming in to set up, so.
Right.
But yeah, so we try to keep everybody apprised of what's going on, and the dates and the times, so, so they know what to expect.
Other questions? Seeking a motion.
I'd make a motion for a street closure for 2019, 2020 for the Danville Tri-Cappa.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion. Always great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Close them aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. Sticking with our theme of street closures, Julie McLaughlin.
Hi. I'm Julie McLaughlin. I run Indiana Skunk Rescue. And I was brought up, I don't like begging for money. So, I started attending vending events to where you could pet a skunk. It's Diana, she's dissented, she's a pet, she uses a litter box, she comes when she's called, she gives kisses. She's really smart, really friendly. You could pet her for a dollar donation. Then as I started going to more, a dollar does not get you very far, because everything our rescue does, we do for free. I do free educational programs. Most of my business is here in Danville. That's why I wanted to have the event in Danville. If any of you had a skunk in your house or under a shed, I will come out, I will get it, I will remove it, and I will not charge you one single penny. Donations are appreciated, but they most certainly are not required. Most people do not donate. So, I had to come up with a way to raise money to save the skunks. I'm the only rescue in the United States that can help both domesticated and wild skunks. I have all my permits to do both. It's extremely expensive. So, I held a vending event at the Hendricks County Fairgrounds. It did really well. I had over a thousand people in attendance. That day, the weather was so bad, 36 was shut down for a little while from snow and ice. Still had over a thousand people attend. The rescue in Hendricks County gets a really good response. And I cannot believe Danville has so many skunks that need help. When I thought I would do, you know, wild ones also, I thought I would get one or two calls, like, for the whole season. There are some days in the summertime, I'm going out eight times a day saving skunks.
And just to clarify, these are four-legged skunks, not two-legged skunks?
Yes, yeah, they're just like her. They're just, so, I've talked to the fire marshal, I've talked to Ray Whitaker, and I talked to the chief of police. They all said they did not have a problem with shutting down the three roads, the three roads around the square, so that I could have a vending event July 4th. I have calls into several insurance companies. I bought my insurance last time from the fairgrounds, so I didn't know, I was looking at a million-dollar policy. I was going to ask you guys how much I should get, because I don't know, I'm brand new. And it would be vendors kind of exactly like what she's doing, just craft vendors selling things. I wanted to have like a bouncy house, and face painting, and things for children. And I wanted to have a July 4th from 10 to 4:00. They could start setting up like at 9:00 in the morning, so I'd need it from like 9:00 to 5:00, just a few-hour event on the 4th to raise money for my rescue. And I always give back to the community. Like, after I did the one at the fairgrounds, Indiana Skunk Rescue is offering a $500 scholarship to a senior in Hendricks County. So, we do try to earn our own money, and out of that money, we try to give back to the community as much as we possibly can.
And what streets would you want closed?
Washington, yeah, just around, around the square. Yeah, just those three streets.
All right. Any questions? Police?
Two questions.
Police, fire, streets, okay, go ahead.
Fourth of July, a lot of people are home barbecuing, they're on the lake. Is that a good day for you to have that?
I'm hoping that it will be. You would not believe the people that will come and see skunks, like the Wild Bird Place down in Avon.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, I...
I mean, the fourth of July is, everybody barbecues, goes on the beach.
I hope people are out doing stuff. And the reason I wanted to have it on the square too is, you know, you're driving by, you see it, hey, what's this? And I mean, all advertised. I'm hoping it will turn out well.
Next question is, how do you get that smell off you when they squirt you?
Peroxide.
Peroxide?
Tomato juice, yeah. Tomato juice no longer works, because they changed the acidity level in tomato juice, so straight peroxide will take it off.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I wish I would have had her number a couple of years ago, when I had five of those underneath my mini barn.
I would have come got them.
All right, so what's the pleasure of the council? Do we want to close the square on the Fourth of July to have, no offense, a skunk fest?
I'll make a motion to close the square on the Fourth of July for the skunk fest.
Second.
Can we have a second? Further discussion? Julie, you'll have to make contact with the merchants in that area to make sure that they're aware of the closures, and then work with the fire, police, and the street to make sure that it's adequate for whatever their needs might be.
Okay. Is a million dollars good? Okay.
Okay, perfect. All right, any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You've got that.
Thank you.
One more thing. I will pay a dollar. My history with critters has not been all that good, but I like you.
I was peeing on you.
Wouldn't be the first time. All right.
She's really docile.
Does he smell or she smells good? She smells better than a cat.
Oh, yeah!
I have one. Good.
Got to.
You don't have to pay, you can pet her or hold her.
Well, yeah, one-up me there, buddy. For 20, I guess you'd get to take her home.
You like me better than her. Uh-oh, she likes me better.
Does she sleep in bed with you? She give you kids?
Well, I'd be the first woman to do that.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have a saying at our house, "When was the last time you did something for the first time?", and I can say that today. So, thank you, thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right. On to our next thing. Is the CCD, we don't have Jenny here today, is there any?
It's okay, yeah, we can, all you need to do is open it up for a public hearing, gavel a public hearing.
Okay.
And go from there.
All right, I'll open up a public hearing on our CCD. Any comments from the public? CCD?
Development.
Yep.
We have to reestablish the rate at 5% every year. It's just a formality essentially, just to keep it, if not, it self-dwonders, and if we don't reset it, then it's down to zero.
I wish Jenny was here, because she could give you greater detail.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Sorry she's not here to answer these questions. All right, hearing done, we'll close that. And, we ready for a vote on this?
You don't need a vote.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I don't think so. I think we need to do it in the next meeting. Okay. Parking solution, Jim Phillips, what you got?
The past few years, as I've wandered around this square, talking with the merchants, and mostly in the act of soliciting them for sponsorships for our Rotary Group, I keep hearing them concerned about having adequate space for their potential customers or customers to park and utilize their shops for the items that they're after. There seems to be a disgruntlement of availability of parking during normal business hours for them. So, what I'm suggesting is to appoint two people as co-chair, Greg Erby and Tracy Shear, both merchants on the square, to take a look at this problem from everybody's perspective, that being the merchants, as well as the county, as well as the sheriff, as well as the judges, and come up with some solutions that would satisfy the merchants, which is what it's all about, really. We spend a lot of money, we devote a lot of attention and energy to create an atmosphere of availability for those downtown merchants, and we've done that for years. And if they're having a problem like that, that's affecting their business in a negative way, it's kind of, it's not the kind of atmosphere that we need for what we're trying to do with downtown. So, I would like to suggest that these two people chair it, gather the invested parties, sit down and talk through it, and come up with some solutions, bring it back to us in a couple of months, and give us the solutions that they've come up with, and let us take a look at it and vote on them.
Question.
These two agreed to do this?
Pardon me?
Have these two agreed to do this?
Those two have agreed to do it.
And have they talked about how large this committee might be?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Do you know how large that might be?
Yes, I do.
Would you be willing to share?
No, I won't. No, I'm just kidding. They don't want a large committee, they want a committee with easily manageable, so they don't waste a lot of time going through the preliminaries. So, I'm thinking they're going to be around that five to seven vested interest, interested parties.
Okay. Any other discussion on this board? Jim seeking consensus for us to allow them to do this? Team?
We would make ourselves available to any, they want to do. We also have prior parking studies that have done, previous administrations, be more happy to give to the committee, and they can look at it and use it to their disposal.
They want a meeting spot, too, I mean...
Open up anywhere they want to meet, we'll make it happen.
Jim, would they, and Jim Hilton chime in on this one? Is this something that one, at least, someone from the police department be on?
Sure.
We do have a person that deals with our parking.
Yes, we do.
On the enforcement side, but as far as management, you know, with SOPs and things like that.
Would you have time to work with that?
Yep, Jim, okay. We'll make a note of that. Because it kind of falls under your jurisdiction, and I just think that having that view of it might, in addition to the merchants, might not help hurt, and then we keep our hands out of it, and it becomes citizen-driven at that point, just, you know, obviously, their knowledge, your knowledge, try to make the best decision. Maybe we can finally settle this. It's only been going on since people have been parking buggies there, so, who knows? Maybe we'll hit it right this time. Meters, yeah, it's been done before. All right, consensus of the council, what do you think? Chris?
Um, Jim?
And I'm in, too. Have at it. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. IT solutions.
All right, in front of you, I'd like to actually, I haven't ran this by completely and got the yes from Jenny, so it's really just informing you on this meeting, I guess, more than anything, because I haven't got full approval for it. But we've been working on some projects. This top project here requesting funding for Office 365. It's a business function, it's going to make, give us a lot more opportunities, it's going to save us some money, not up, more upfront than over the long run, it'll be about the same cost. We'll be able to add Microsoft Office opportunities, and then kind of streamline a lot of the stuff we do also. It'll help with shared documents and things like that. It's something that we've been wanting to do for about two years, and we never had the opportunity until recently, we realized the need for it. And with that is, the annual cost would be around $6,500. That's still to be determined, because there's three levels that you can pick, as far as, you know, what your staff needs. So, there'll be, instead of, you know, every three years paying $30,000 for an exchange server, or, you know, give or take, we'd be paying, or monthly, pretty much, for the service. And with that, we get Microsoft Office as well. Most businesses run with 365 now anyways, because of the benefit, and Microsoft is going towards 365 eventually anyways, you won't be able to have an exchange server in the future. But our goal would be to kind of jump over to this, to streamline a lot of processes, and we've had some issues with some emails and stuff, and this would fix those as well. Jenny seemed like she was on board before, and I know our full IT committee has been wanting to do this for a while. Now, it seems like a good time, I just want to have, just wanted to kind of let you know before we move forward with it. And I'll be finding out from Jenny where she wants to find the money to pay for it, too. But that was really the main purpose for this, and then secondary was to give you an update on some of the functions we've been working on as well. Computer upgrades, we have a lot of Windows 7 computers, and they need to be upgraded, because Windows 7 isn't no longer serviced with updates, so it puts our network at risk. So, we're getting a list together, it's about 30 computers, maybe about 25 now, and we're going to send it out to the department heads, and have them start updating what they have. We've also been working with One Choice to get a more standardized computer purchasing program, so you'll have an A model and a B model, you know, the A model's a little fancier, B model's not as fancy, it's a little cheaper. And the goal is to kind of streamline the equipment that we have as well. So, we're going to be working on that process, and hopefully saving the department's money when we do that. And then we'll all have the same equipment. Dual authentication, we were looking at this towards the treasurer's office, and we may not be ready for it completely yet, but it's really kind of important. It's like, you get that text message after, to be able to log into something, you can't just log in, you do your credentials, but then it sends you a text message, and then you get a code, and from that code, you have to type in the code to then get into the computers. I think it's a good thing for the treasurer's office, it's moving a step forwards, towards that security, like we're wanting to do, and it'll make everyone a little bit safer, I think, in the long run. And then spoofing, so we've been collecting some computers that we thought may be infected, we've just been running them through, a lot of the department heads, just because they send so much more emails than anybody else. So, we've gone through most of those, I think we have like one or two left to do, and we should be completely done with that. We did find a lot of holes from past systems that were in there, so we have patched all those holes, so now no one can get in from the outside. A lot of go-to webinars and stuff like that, which just need to be cleaned up, and we did that. And then cameras, so we started the process, me and Mark met with One Choice, the initial stage, they're doing drawings of all of our facilities, and hope to have that done within the next month. And then, we would like to have, we're hoping that we have cameras in by the six-month mark from the end, or, yeah, pretty much the end of March. So, our goal is to start with town hall, put in the brains and update, you know, all the cameras here, pretty much this would be the primary, and then putting little brains into the other facilities, and then it's up to departments to add to the system if they want to add cameras. So, that way, we're paying for the, so everybody has the same model, and then if they want more features, they can pay for the features. So, these are all projects that we're working on, that are going to come to fruition this year. So, just with the Office 365, I'll have more information, I may have to come to you again just once we get confirmation, just because it is a large annual fee, so.
Okay. Any questions for Will? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tornado warning sirens, Chief Morgan.
Towards the end of last year, it came to our attention that the siren in Commerce Park was inoperable. Before we could get a chance to truly get a fix on it, the communications center quit doing testing due to the winter months. We've been able to start testing it again, we did find that a circuit board had gone bad on that particular siren unit. I'm asking tonight for a total amount of $9,946 to put a new circuit board on that siren. We do have a line item for siren repair, however, it's only $5,000, so clearly it wouldn't cover this. And the reason I'm not asking for an addition to that $5,000, there's going to be some install work that'll have to be done once the circuit board is manufactured, and then there'll have to be some patchwork done between the radio that receives the signal and the circuit board. So, I need the money left in that account. This request would come out of the Host Priority Projects Fund.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'd make a motion, we take $9,946 out of the Host Fund for the siren in Commerce Park.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Timeline on this, how long would it take?
I'll order it tomorrow. It should be as soon as they can get it installed, so I don't, I don't think it'll take too long.
Okay.
It's just getting the part.
Right.
And then we'll, we'll get with Raycom, once they get the part installed, we'll get with Raycom to hook everything up.
Motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, you're up there.
Yes, sir.
How's it going?
Came to my attention that April is community cleanup month, so we scrambled to put together this flyer that you have in front of you for the community cleanup day for Danville, down in Danville. Worked with Waste Management. The day that was chosen was April 27th, which is a Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. On the backside of the flyer, you'll see that the evenings in Ellis Park, sponsored by The Chamber, we're trying to obviously maximize our advertising dollar. The nice thing about this is, we have split the cost of this flyer with The Chamber, so we're going to pay half, and The Chamber's paying half, so it reduces our costs on this. But I thought it turned out really nice, we had these printed in Avon, they'll be folded and put out, and go out with the April water bills.
Okay, great. Now, this is a great opportunity, I've taken advantage of it before, and the community really enjoys that.
I agree. Sorry, Mr. President, I'll stay up here and address your last issue.
Community cleanup, we're all okay with this? Consensus?
Yep.
Chris?
Great, great.
Okay, good. And redevelopment report?
Before you, you'll see a report came out of Gateway for the Redevelopment Commission. Clerk Treasurer just needs you to move to approve and make a vote on it. This, again, this is coming straight out of Gateway with the numbers that are provided by the Clerk Treasurers and the Redevelopment Commission.
Okay. And the balance in this particular account is $264,035. Okay, great. Now, this is a great opportunity, I've taken advantage of it before, and, uh, the community really enjoys that.
I agree. Sorry, Mr. President, I'll stay up here and address your last issue.
Community cleanup, we're all okay with this, consensus?
Yep, great, great.
Okay, good, and redevelopment report?
Before you, you'll see a report, came out of Gateway for the Redevelopment Commission. Um, Clerk Treasurer just needs you to, uh, move to approve and make a vote on it. Uh, this, again, this is coming straight out of Gateway with the numbers that are provided by the Clerk Treasurers and the Redevelopment Commission.
Okay. And the balance in this particular account is $264,035.55.
That's correct.
What is the pleasure of the council? Do we accept this report?
Make a motion, we accept this report.
I have a second.
Second.
And a motion and a second to accept the TIFF Management Annual Report of the Redevelopment Commission? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
We have accepted that. Uh, before we get to the public comment, real quick, I left something out and I apologize, that was my fault. Uh, before our executive session, we did, excuse me, before the council meeting, we had an executive session to interview potential candidates for the town management. We interviewed three individuals, there was one individual that could not be, uh, could not interview at this time due to some, uh, personal issues, and as soon as we can get that scheduled, we will schedule our fourth interview and then try to make a decision. I sincerely doubt that will happen before our next meeting in April, so it, hopefully, the first meeting, or at least the second meeting in May, we'll have a decision, uh, to make an offer for a town council manager's position. So, just kind of getting you guys in the loop, tell you what we did. So, we'll have one more executive session to interview that individual, um, and, and then we'll be able to make a, a decision in a public meeting. Okay? Alright. Public comment, anything from the public tonight? Okay, hearing none, around the horn. Team? Nothing? Ray, Jim? Any other department managers out there? Nothing? Phillips?
No, I said my piece earlier.
Okay, Tom?
Yes, uh, I've been investigating a possibility of a dog park. I've got a few people that would like to get on a committee. Dog park would consist of fencing, the people would get a key for a fee, the dogs would have, uh, shots and things like that, and the fee would pay for the cost of the dog park. I understand there are other towns that have this and it works okay, so what I'm proposing is, I got some people that would get together and investigate this and then come back later and put it up against, see if we'd approve that.
Do they have a location in mind yet, or is that?
No, I think that's what they're going to do, I mean, that Gary can park down in the corner, but, uh, we don't know yet. They're going to go take a look. I think your backyard would be excellent.
They scare off the bu, scare off the buzzards.
You, you have an acre there that we love to use.
Yeah. Alright, Dennis? Chris?
Nope. I've got nothing either. We'll get everything, we'll get the siren fixed, uh, we've got, approved some road closures, uh, you're up to date on the town management position, and got nothing left but the claim docket.
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve the claim docket, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, further discussion on the claim docket? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Re-adjourn, good night, drive careful.